All right, as the bells toll at Hartley Dodge, it is eight P M. And let the record reflect, we have reconvened with all members present, please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
Mayor, you may have been muted for the pledge of allegiance.
All right, sorry about that. I somehow got muted and then could not unmute myself, so I appreciate everyone picking up on the pledge for me.
Nobody did. It was complete silence. Sorry.
Let's, if it was complete silence, let's let us do this properly, so we hold that. Please rise for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag, United States of America. And to the republic which stands unmachined, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, and I'm sorry about all that. I want to take a moment of silence for a few people we have lost since our last meeting. Anne Servone Palma, a lifelong Madison resident, passed away in her sleep peacefully at her home on Friday, March 12th. She was one hundred and two. She may very well represent the longest residency in Madison. As Anne was born in Madison, December 7th, 1918, the late Philip and Rose Servone. She grew up on North Street, the family of ten children, and remained on North Street throughout her life, and that's where she was this year. She's a graduate of Madison High School. She worked as a secretary for Pat Sedano's law firm before becoming a Realtor for Esposito Realty in Madison. And also dedicated her life to helping others in any way she could. She did extensive work for Italian immigrants, completing their immigration paperwork, finding them affordable real estate, and even helping them to learn English. She also did income taxes for lower-income families before retiring at the age of seventy. In her retirement, Anne's focus shifted to taking care of her home and her older brother Frank. Anne was a lifelong parishioner of St. Vincent Martyr Church, and was a loving mother to her son Charles and a kind, caring friend of all who knew and loved her. Her spirit and presence will be deeply missed. In addition to her parents, Anne is predeceased by her brothers Frank, Joseph, Don, James, and Salvador, and her sisters Antoinette, Raphael, Teresa, and Yolanda. She's survived by her son Charles. We also remember Barbara Leverance, a lifelong Madison resident, a longtime Madison resident, not lifelong, passed away at her home on Wednesday, March 17th. She was seventy-seven. She was born in Madison, Morristown, April 3rd, 1943, the late William and Josephine McLachlan. And Barbara took a job at Woolworth's in Madison, but her true joy was caring for her beloved family. She was a lifelong parishioner of St. Vincent Martyr Church. And Barbara enjoyed cooking, especially Italian food, driving around to go shopping. She also loved to go down to Shore to LBI. In addition to her parents, she is predeceased by her brothers Peter, William, and James. She's survived by her sons Carl and Christopher and three grandchildren, one great-grandchild. Also want to remember Michael Robeska, who died on March 4th, at his home in Menham at the age of ninety-two. While never living in Madison, Mike left his mark as a fifty-six-year member of the Madison Rotary Club. He served in the U.S. Navy following World War II on the USS Lennon, the USS Robinson, and served the United States Naval Reserve. After starting off as a teacher, he became a principal of Ridgedale Middle School in Farm Park in July, 1960, and retired from Farm Park School District after thirty years in June, 1990. And as no one can tell, for middle school, that's a long time as a principal. During the time at Ridgedale, he could often be found enjoying lunch at the counter at CJ's Deli. Madison was, Michael was an active and passionate member of Madison Rotary Club. And as Madison Rotary wrote, Madison Rotary not only lost a legend with the passing of Mike, he was a rotarian for fifty-six years, provided leadership to numerous programs that have positively affected the lives of thousands and thousands of people. If there was a Rotary event, Mike would be there. Mike is survived by his wife of sixty-seven years, Claire, his brother Victor, his six children, his fourteen grandchildren, and ten great-grandchildren. He was predeceased by his sister, Muriel. Let us take a moment to remember Anne Palma. Barbara Leverance, Mike Robeska. Let us also remember the eight who were murdered in Atlantic area, deaths that have touched our Asian-American community. Let us now pass our thoughts on to the families and friends they leave behind. Thank you. There are no minutes for approval. We'll catch up with that in the next meeting, so let me get to my message here. First of all, I want to welcome Bob Landergan back. It's great to have you back here and good to see that you're on your, well on the road to recovery and so sorry about the slip and as you were trying to serve Madison, as you've put in so many hours to help our community.
Thank you, Mayor. It's good to be back.
And as we know, the spring arrived this weekend, and it was a beautiful spring weekend, and a true sign that spring has arrived is the fact that yesterday I retrieved the first foul ball of the season from my driveway, so we are here. But I wanted to take a moment to put this point in time in perspective. So I pulled up my comments from our council meeting almost a year ago, March 30th, 2020, and here is some of what I said. Welcome to our first virtual council meeting. Our last meeting was on March 9th, only three weeks on the calendar of years in respect to how our lives have changed. Originally, this move, this meeting was moved from last Monday so the council members could attend the Taste of Madison. Of course, that did not happen. Though many of us enjoyed our own version of a virtual taste. This extra week allowed us to put all resources towards handling the initial days of a crisis while also putting this platform in place. And here we are, a year later, still we're using this platform. We are testing our systems, but that doesn't mean it will not be without bumps, as we saw during the pledge today. And I went on to say, I want to thank all Madison residents for taking COVID-19 so seriously. While we've had a few issues of noncompliance, it appears that everyone is now following social distancing protocols. We now know that this will be our world for at least the next month. That was wishful thinking at that time. We all know the saying, every cloud has a silver lining, and this is probably the darkest cloud we've ever seen, but it also has a silver lining. It has brought families closer together, literally as we are spending so much time in our homes, but also during the time, spend any fresh air and exercise while walking together as a family. This day and age of screen and quality time, just maybe the pandemic can produce a positive result by moving families more closely together. I then went on to discuss some of the programs we rolled out to the community, including this statement of, "From the generosity of our residents to fiscal strength of Madison, Madison is in position not only to weather the storm, but to pave the road to recovery. You have our commitment that we are on your side, not only today, but coming weeks and months and year, with an eye to future years so we can stay Madison strong." So that's where we were almost a full year ago, and we are still working there. So let's keep in mind, we are not out of this yet. In fact, a new string of new variants has slowed down the reopening process, as the governor announced today. But there is a light at the end of the tunnel, so let us let us not stop our effort to protect ourselves and those around us. A couple of recent Madison hotspots have reminded us that COVID can spread very quickly. So keep wearing your masks when you're around others, follow the guidelines that limit gatherings for indoor and outdoor activities, and when you can get the vaccine, do it. Spring is an annual rebirth and a reminder that after the cold winter comes the life of spring and summer, so we will get to this finish line. And shifting gears a little bit, I want to share a Facebook post from Eugene Wong, who had gotten into cardiac arrest at the tennis courts at the high school and was revived by the police department. And this is what Eugene posted. "I was there, but I have no recollection of the events. What I do remember is officers clancy and men is coming to my house a few weeks later to check on me. There was genuine happiness in their faces, even through their masks, that I was doing well as I am." The comment I remember from that visit as I met my seven, eleven-year-old kids and a wife was the effect of, "This is what it's all about. In the moment, you're just trying to save a life, but there's so much involved in that. For my family, my friends, and of course, for me, thank you." So Eugene, thank you for sharing that very special message. And you may have also seen posted today that Chief Darren Datchison just announced his retirement from the Madison Police Department. He became chief during my first year as mayor, and over the past years, ten years, has provided great leadership to our department. His commitment to community policing has made our apartment one for all the residents of Madison. And I especially appreciate his participation in so many community events, especially over the past year as we dealt with so much that is going on, going on in the world around us. And lastly, as we close out Women's History Month, I want to recognize four Madison women. First, Connie Stober, as the first woman to hold any elected office. She had to work harder than any candidate to get elected, and then served Madison for two terms. Eddie Bumgartner, the first woman to serve as mayor. Her dedication to our downtown created the DDC, and of course, Potters Hill Day. And then two recent council members. Carmella Vitale, who stepped down after eighteen years, and Austria Belly, who just announced that after twenty-one years, this is her last one. I haven't checked the records, but if Carmella and Austria aren't the longest-serving members of our council in the history of Madison, they are certainly among the top. But it is not longevity, but their dedication that has made Madison a better place. So let us wrap up Women's History Month by recognizing four great women who worked so hard for residents of Madison. And with that, we will shift to reports from committees. Public Safety, Council President Byrne.
Thank you, Mayor. From the Fire Department, the Fire Department has begun training as a group again, again, following CTC guidelines for gatherings. Chief DeRosa has assembled a group of volunteers to look at increasing the recruitment and retention of volunteer firefighters. The committee will look at neighboring communities' practices for ideas on identifying and recruiting volunteer firefighters. And we will begin the process of hiring an additional firefighter to replace a retiring member of the department tonight. The New Jersey Forest Fire Service will be conducting a prescribed burn tomorrow, March 23rd, at the MRC complex. We had planned this event back in late fall, and tomorrow is finally the day. Madison and Florham Park Fire Departments will be standing by at the MRC during the burn. The burn is scheduled to begin around 10:00 a.m. and conclude around noon. Notifications have gone out, and more will be made tomorrow. From the Police Department, Police Chief Datchison asked me to read the following letter. "Dear Madison, it is with mixed emotions that I write this letter to inform you about my pending retirement on April 26. I sincerely want to thank you for the distinct honor of serving this special community for three decades. Thirty years ago, Madison Borough gave a young man a chance to pursue his lifelong dream of becoming a police officer and serving in his family tradition of law enforcement, and I hope I have not disappointed you. During my career, I have worked alongside some very special officers who worked tirelessly to make this community a safe place to live and work. Please support these outstanding officers, no matter what the national temperature is towards law enforcement. I would also be remiss if I didn't thank the president and past majors, council members, and administration who have supported our department and myself over the years. I would also like to thank the Madison Fire Department and Madison Ambulance Corps, who gave so much for the sake of others. Over the past thirty years, I have witnessed the full circle of life during my duties and have seen the best, worst society has to offer. I have made many friends in this community along this wonderful journey. Although I will no longer be your chief of police, I will always be available, will help this town and my department in any way I can. Although my time in the Madison police uniform is coming to a close, I will always be a Madison police officer at heart. And once again, thank you for the fond memories, and although I don't know what the next phase of my life will bring, I will always cherish my time serving you and commanding the best men and women in law enforcement that I have ever known." That's from Chief Darren Datchison. And finally, from the Museum of Early Trades and Crafts, on Monday, March 15th, Mayor Conley, Councilwoman Bailey, and I had the honor to attend the awarding of a New Jersey Historic Trust grant in the amount of $50,000 presented to the Museum of Early Trades and Crafts by Lieutenant Governor Sheila Oliver. The grant was matched by the New Jersey Historical Commission and the Madison Open Space Recreation Historic Preservation Trust. The work being funded creates a feasibility study and construction documents for the construction of a state-of-the-art, usable collection storage facility in the historic James Library Building in Madison. The project will address the following strategic goals of the museum. It will properly house and conserve the entire collection in one location, ensure the construction complements the historic building, improve the building's environment through upgraded mechanical, electrical, plumbing, fire suppression, temperature, and humidity controls, address any remaining water mitigation, and provide greater public access to the collection through effective rehousing and digitalization. And that's my report. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. And now Finance Borough Clerk, Ms. Ellie.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you for your kind words. That was quite a surprise. First, from the Clerk's Office, in anticipation of the June 8th primary, the filing deadline for nomination petitions for county committee member as well as municipal office is 4:00 p.m., April 5th, 2021. The forms are available in the Borough Clerk's Office or online at the Morris County Clerk's website. Voter registration forms as well as mail-in ballot applications are also available in the Borough Clerk's Office or online at morriselections.org. The polls will be open for in-person voting on June 8th. Residents that wish to vote by mail may do so by applying for a mail-in ballot before June 1st. And I'll wait for my comments when we discuss the budget. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. And Public Works in Engineering, Mr. Hoover.
Thank you, Mayor. From Public Works, roadway barricades have been cleaned and will be reinstalled in the commercial district starting tomorrow to allow expanded outside dining opportunities in a safe environment. DPW is coordinating placement of the barricades with the Police Traffic Safety Unit. All sidewalk benches have been reconditioned and will be reinstalled starting tomorrow. The new street sweeper has arrived. Staff has been trained, and the vehicle is now operational. The hours at the new recycling center have been expanded. New hours are Tuesday and Friday from 8:00 a.m. to noon, and Saturday from 8:00 a.m. to 2:30 p.m. A dedicated pothole crew has been working full-time to repair the damage to borough roads from a severe winter weather season. To report a pothole, go to rosenet.org/1297/c/clickfix. Okay, for Engineering Department, the contract agreement for Hartley Dodge Memorial Plaza restoration has been sent to the general contractor Merrill and Garaguso of Swedesboro, New Jersey, and a pre-construction meeting is being arranged this week. The intent of the contract is to break ground in April and continue working through the summer. Plans, specifications, and bid documents were advertised for Anthony Drive and Wayne Boulevard. The scheduled public bid opening is March 30th at 11:00 a.m. Revised plans for Cook Plaza Parking Lot have been received and will be reviewed internally by several committees. An updated plan for Waverly Place may also be available this week for discussion. Final New Jersey Department of Transportation reimbursement submittals were completed for projects completed last year, including Greenwood Avenue, MA 18, Glenwood Road, MA 19, and Burnett Road, MA 20, totaling 182,625,000 eligible funding. Plans, specifications, and bid documents for the MRC Trail Project will be advertised next week with similar intent to complete construction work during the summer months. Similarly, quotes for Trails of Summer Hill Park and Playground Approvements at Dodge Field will be obtained in April. The rebuilt pump for Well AB Treatment Plant was delivered and installed last Thursday by Municipal Maintenance Incorporated Cinnamons in New Jersey, based on a contract awarded last November. The pump and motor have been operating routinely since installation. The Shade Tree Management Board, Madison has been awarded Tree City for the 36th year and the Growth Award for the 16th year. A scaled-back Arbor Day celebration is being planned with a tree planting in Summer Hill Park. Main Street pear trees between Prospect and Green Village are being pruned to better see business signs and to avoid being a hazard if the Fire Department needs to get access to adjoining buildings. With the Recreation Department, spring sports are now underway, and the normal tournament schedule will resume this season. The Junior Girls Lacrosse Battle of the Burrows Tournament will be hosted at the MRC on Sunday, April 25th, and the Junior Boys Lacrosse Platypus Tournament on Saturday, June 5th, and Sunday, June 6th. The spring and summer schedule is filling up fast. Thirty groups at sixteen sites will be hosted this season. Some summertime slots do remain, but please reach out to Zach Ellis at recreation@rosenet.org as soon as possible to reserve space. The pickleball courts added at Madison High School are still seeing a lot of action, including a successful fundraising tournament organized by the Madison Education Foundation this month. The courts are available on a first-come, first-served basis when not in use by Madison High School, PE classes, or athletics. The Nature Nuts Program will be returning to Memorial Park this summer after a one-year hiatus due to COVID-19. Details on how to register will be posted on Rosenet as soon as they're available. The Environmental Commission, the Madison Environmental Commission is hosting, is hosted a Master Gardener Talk Saturday on backyard composting that had more than 100 registrants. The event was cosponsored with the Chatham's and Morris Township. On Wednesday, March 24th, the MEC is holding its annual Green Vision Forum, where students from our schools will share their visions for a greener Madison. The mayor and council members are attending. The Madison-Chatham Townwide Yard Sale will be held on April 17th. Residents can list their yard sales on a digital map with a $10 tax-deductible donation to the Great Swamp Watershed Association. Sustainable Madison would like, they would like to thank the council and the borough staff for all the work they do to make our town sustainable, which resulted in another number one for Madison. We were sustainable New Jersey champions for 2021, certifying with the most points in the mid-population category and with the second highest points among all municipalities certifying this year. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. And now Community Affairs, Ms. Cohen.
Thank you, Mayor. The next meeting of the Downtown Development Commission is scheduled for Thursday, April 15th at 7:15 via Zoom. If you're interested in volunteering for May Day on May 1st, please email ddc@rosenet.org. Madison Farmer's Market will begin May 20th. New hours are from 1:00 to 6:00 p.m. The Taste of Madison that originally was scheduled for last week will be held in May. Stay tuned for more details in the coming weeks. The search for Shelley the Easter Egg began this past weekend and will run through Saturday, April 3rd, culminating with the Easter Fun Fest on that day from 11:00 to 12:30. Social distancing, proper protocols in place. There will be a table set up where individuals may guess the number of jelly beans, see the Easter Bunny, and turn in their Shelley Egg participation cards to win a children's bike and other prizes. The Madison Community Arts Center is still searching for a title sponsor for the new series, Spring Ahead with the Arts, a variety of entertainment, music, stand-up, children's theater, et cetera, which will be presented on Waverly Place Fridays from April 9th through May 28th. Work of Heart Productions will present several performances in July and August, and professional stage readings of new plays will be happening in April and May. MACA has a fundraising committee meeting on March 30th, and then a board meeting on April 21st. Both will focus on fundraising initiatives for MACA and the Community Arts Center. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. And Utilities, Ms. Ehrlich.
Thank you, Mayor. From the Electric Department, the Electric Department is starting to convert the streetlights on Woodland Road now to LEDs. The department set three new poles, one on Rosemont Ave, one on Rosewood Drive, and one on Union Hill Road in preparation for service upgrades. And the standby crew was called out twice last week, once to remove a large branch from a service line on Greenwood Ave and once to repair a low-hanging wire in the roadway on Palmeroy Road. From the Water Department, the department installed a new water tap and service line to a new home at 57 Fairview Ave, and the Water Department responded to service calls for water turn-off and turn-on for customer valve replacements, as well as water shut-off and need of removal for home demolitions. That's all for utilities.
Thank you. And Health, Mr. Landergan.
Thank you, Mayor. As of today, Madison reports 705 total confirmed cases of COVID-19. Of those 41 are still considered active. Vaccine sites in Morris County, including the regional site at the Rockaway Mall, continue to serve residents. New pharmacy sites continue to come online, including the Madison Walgreens and the Chatham Borough CVS. In response to the specific needs of our senior population, New Jersey has established a specific dedicated hotline for those 65 years of age and older. Those seniors who need assistance registering for the New Jersey Vaccine Scheduling System can call 856-249-7007. And finally, visit rosenet.org for updates on the vaccination program, COVID-19 testing locations, and other pandemic guidance. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. And now we're on to the first of two invitations for discussion. This one is an opportunity, ask question, make some comment on items on the addenda and our resolution. So any other comments have to wait until later in the meeting. If you are online and wish to make a comment, you do so by raising, clicking the hand, and you should do that as soon as you feel like you need to make a comment, so you don't have to wait until the last minute. And if you change your mind, you can always unclick. If you're on a phone, you hit star nine. And note for security reasons, we cannot recognize anyone listed as anonymous or with a call without a number identified. And when you are recognized, unmuted, you must first state your name and address before stating any comments. Whether you do so may result in you being muted or disconnected. Please state the addenda item or the resolution you're commenting on. Again, because it's limited to those items. And you will be given three minutes to comment, but we'll give you a one-minute grace period, and you stop at four. And so as not to take from your time, we will capture questions during your comments and answer them during the agenda discussion. The agenda discussions obviously will be including the introduction of budget, and then there's also an agenda discussion on the joint meeting revised bylaws, and these are the resolutions. This first one will be introduced or voted on during the budget process, and it's the Resolution 88 to use a three-year average for revenue anticipation. Typically, you can only recognize the amount of revenue was used in the past year. We could have put more pressure on this year's budget. Resolution 90, 2021, also related to the budget, is a self-examination budget resolution. Resolution 91 is approving pro-proprietary firefighter list. This is step one for filling vacancy in the Fire Department. Resolution 92 is authorizing advertisement for a part-time office assistant for a vacancy that is coming up, and this is funded through the 2021 municipal budget. Resolution 93 is authorizing contract with McNeese, Wallace, and Nurek LLC as special counsel for electric utility. Our previous council have retired. Resolution 94 is authorizing advertisement for assistant director and counselors for Nature Nuts Summer Program, and this is contingent on the continued progress related to COVID and be able to run the program. Resolution 95 is supporting the establishment of a Veterans Affairs Center in Northwest New Jersey. Currently, veterans in Morris, Warren, and Sussex County have to travel into other counties, and this is supporting the efforts of our Warren and Sussex County have to travel into other counties and this is supporting the efforts of our. Senate, US Senators and also our Congress members, Mike Sherrill, Tom Malinowski and Josh Dottenheimer. Who represent this area. Resolution ninety-six is authorizing purchase of borough cell phones and tablets through a New Jersey cooperative pricing. System and this is not to exceed forty thousand dollars funded in the budget. Resolution ninety-seven is amending. The accepting amended Madison-Chatham Joint Meeting bylaws. As we already mentioned, Resolution ninety-eight is appointing Alessandro Amato to position a per diem safety. Telecommunications officer, sometimes known as dispatch. Resolution ninety-nine is authorizing purchase of. Landscape chemical application and fertilizer services through the Somerset County Cooperative Pricing. And this is with true green, not to exceed forty thousand dollars. And Resolution one hundred is authorizing Good Grief to hold a five-k run at Draw the Farm on Sunday, June sixth, twenty-twenty-one. And Resolution one oh one is authorizing use of Kings Road Municipal Parking Lot by the Madison Area YMCA for group exercise. So you may comment on those. The, the budget or the joint meeting bylaws. And I'll call up Tom Howard and Potus.
Okay. Hello, Mayor. Hello, Councilmen and Councilwomen. Hello, everybody. My name is Tom Harlan-Putus. I live at twenty-seven Palmeroy Road. Thank you for coming tonight and for the opportunity to speak to you. Since the budget, introduction of the budget and tax resolutions on the agenda, I wanted to comment on. My opinion that has changed a little bit since the last time I spoke. After hearing Mr. Burnett's presentation at the last meeting regarding the. Challenges to continue to receive the same revenue. Within the different borough agencies, whether it be construction, some tax appeals that could possibly affect us. The utilities, I think that what you guys are proposing to move ahead with. Is something that seems to be responsible for maintaining the services in the borough. I would like to reiterate that I hope we do. Appoint the two replacement firemen for those that retired and there is obviously some savings there which should be discussed because. The firemen that retired were at a much higher salary than the current firemen. Another thing I want to bring up is I'd like to get an update, please, on the position of the state aid. And what the state aid might be used for, whatever, whatever dollar amount the borough gets, whether it's within the borough. The Board of Ed for capital projects, for reserves, whatever that might be. I also wanted, I want to look at the, I talked to you about the open space budget, the actual budget for this year and then. Some of the projected budget projects that you guys have on there. So. One resolution that Mr. Hoover just brought up was number seventy-three from a previous meeting. Regarding the renovation of the Hartley Dodge Plaza. And I see here on the open space budget that there's four hundred thousand dollars. That will come from the open space budget for that project, but the project is about a million dollars. So I'd like to know. Where is the other six hundred thousand dollars coming from? If we are under a lot of pressure to keep our expenses down, I'm not sure the urgency. And if that's the most prudent project for us to undertake, I know you've already approved it at a previous meeting, but I still think that requires some discussion. I looked at. Your video from the previous meeting and I didn't hear any discussion on where the funds would come from, Mayor. So that, I think that's kind of important for everybody to understand, but I understand that the plaza does need renovations. And the borough's the one who's our responsible right now for it. There's no matching grants for the actual plaza from what I understand. Another thing I wanted to bring up, please, is. Oh, so with regards to the open space projects that are slated for the future or for right now. Is it possible to prioritize what's on there and actually change? Some of the projects that were just possibly approved to be funded.
One minute, Tom.
Thanks, Mayor. I'm talking as fast as I can without confusing everybody. Is there, is there a chance that you can prioritize some of these projects and. Put. Projects ahead of others that might have a really good direct impact now for the community. I mentioned to you that in the past, you know, this project that's been proposed to you many times. To put in a paddle and pickleball complex over at the pool. I think that's very important. And I can't understand why we wouldn't take advantage of these generous volunteers who want to spearhead the entire project and actually raise. Some money from the public. The other thing is I still see on your, on your proposed future budgets, putting in new turf fields at the high school for a one-point-five million dollars. It, it was never proposed at that high dollar amount, so it's something that needs to be discussed eventually. I see you, Mayor.
We're, we're, we're at time, Tom, but we'll have another comment period. So, thank you. And just to the. Couple of things, the federal aid, Jim will be addressing that. As far as, and we'll, we'll, we'll make sure we cover that during the whole budget discussion, the open space, the contract for the, that was awarded for the plaza. We are getting grant money and we run the risk of running, losing the partnership money if we don't move forward with that. Not to mention that the, as people know, that come to partly non-regular places, we have it partially roped off just because of the heating and all that. And we will be, as time goes on, we'll be addressing the priorities related to the open space. Historic preservation and recreation fund projects. And we now bring up Pat Rowe.
All right, can you hear me now?
Yes.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Pat Rowe, Pine Avenue, Madison, New Jersey. Couple of things real fast about the budget. First, there is a note that there is a Resolution eighty-nine. In the agenda, but it is not included in the packet, so it's difficult to actually make any comments about the budget. Numbers because we don't know what they are yet. And the next time we'll get the comment is going to be after the council votes on at least the introduction. But having said that, I still believe that this is premature. I had a brief text conversation with Jim last Thursday. I had been asking for some other numbers a couple of weeks ago and was getting back them to try to find out what was happening with that. And I did have a chance to ask him whether or not you had received final information about what the, the money coming out of the federal government was going to be. Or what kind of restrictions or other conditions were going to be placed on the use of the money. And at the time he told me he wasn't sure. And that you hadn't received a lot of information. If that's still the case, I'm really not sure how you can introduce a budget tonight. I understand at the last meeting in his conversation with Councilwoman Bailey, he talked about simply dropping in the number in place. Of the tax increase and making one other modification, but I believe that the changes that would have to be made or should be made. Are much more comprehensive than that. The borough took a significant amount of money, additional money out of the utilities this year to make up for a shortfall. I think at a minimum, if you get a significant windfall from the federal government, that money should be placed back. Especially in light of the fact from what I've read online, the federal government is going to restrict the use. At least in terms of your ability to cut taxes. So you may be able to bring back a zero, but you can't use the money to reduce it below that. So the best way to affect an additional windfall, if you will, for the, for the taxpayers and the rate players in town is to move the money back into the utilities. And affect a lower rate there. I think, you know, the intention of that money is to put money into people's hands and not put money into the borough surplus. And frankly, if all you do is recognize the money and use a portion of it to lower the tax rate to zero. The, the rest of the money is going to simply fall into surplus, which I don't believe was the intention of that money being granted to the states and local communities. So I'll look forward to hearing the rest of the budget presentation and I may have more comments at the end. But please bear that in mind as you discuss the introduction of the budget tonight. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Pat. And just a couple of quick teasers on the federal money and as I said, Jim will cover it shortly. Part of it, it's, for one, it is a moving target, which is, goes with the territory. But I did attend a virtual webinar last week. We would anticipate fifty percent of it coming in shortly, fifty percent coming in twelve months. And you are correct, it can't be used for tax reduction. And there's a whole host of tens and cannot twos. Certainly, the intent of that money is to help municipalities and to help the residents. And so. That will be a very, very much a guiding principle as we go forward, but. To the, one of the things in the webinar was it is virtually impossible to use this in any way for the current year budgets. And that's what most municipalities are doing. And Mike Chagru.
Thank you so much, Mayor. I would sincerely like to thank the borough for moving forward to replace the retired Madison. Name it. Oh, sorry, I'm sorry, Mayor. Mike Chagru, twenty-four West End. I'd like to thank the Borough Council sincerely for moving to replace the retired Madison career firefighters. I'd like to respectfully remind the council that two career firefighters retired and need to be replaced. I heard President Byrne mention replacing one. If the issue is that one of those career firefighters is still on the books, as we said. I would add that one of our career firefighters will be out for the next five weeks due to a medical issue, putting more stress on an already skeleton staff. So my question for the council is, will the council move forward immediately to replace both firefighters? Thank you.
Thank, thank you, Mike. And as noted on the agenda is the step one, which is creating the. Hire list, which will allow us to shore up the fire department and anticipate at least. Filling the one vacancy as quickly as possible. And we now bring on, I believe it's Colin.
Thank you, Mayor. It's Chris Holland, eleven Locust Street, Madison. I just, a couple of things. There was a, obviously, I'm one of the persons representing a group that's trying to put the. Paddle, Pickle and Basketball down at the Madison Pool. Something that Tom, Mr. Holland-Putus alluded to. We put together a list of questions based on a couple of meetings that we have with you folks. On March seventh, during the March eighth meeting. It wasn't mentioned in the communications to the town. I just want to make sure that it was noted. I do recognize that, Mayor, you had a death in your family and I, my condolences to your family, but I just wanted to get that on the record. The other item is in regards to Resolution seventy-three. I don't really know the, the procedures as far as the, of government, but. Resolution seventy-three doesn't ever appear on any of the agenda items for review. And it was mentioned towards the end of one of the meetings. And I just didn't understand how the resolution be, can be skipped over in an agenda item. So really what I'm trying to do in my official capacity is, is taking this feedback back to the Recreation Advisory Committee. Who is supporting the, the project at the pool. And I just want to be able to have some feedback for them. In our meeting, which is this coming Wednesday. Thank you.
Thank you, Chris. And yeah, I apologize for the delay. I'm getting that and we'll, we'll touch base before Wednesday. Just a, for, so people can understand, when major projects are taken on, there's really two steps in the project. It is the appropriation of the money, which is where usually the discussion happens and that is done by ordinance. So the ordinance is introduced and then has a second hearing. So that's when the money was appropriated for the plaza project. And then the resolution is what grants the contract. So that is kind of a wrap-up. And so very little. Discussion often happens when the contract is granted because we were, we're being guided by public contract rule laws and so. We're not reviewing and such that this being a historic project, the contractor had to be qualified. So there was that step. It's really just the resolution grants that contract. And we now bring up Denise Katz.
Hi. Denise Katz, twenty-four Parkside Ave. Hi. Just wanted to state that, you know, I had a chance to go over some of the presentations made regarding the budget. And I wanted to thank the council and especially Jim Burnett. It really helped me understand the pressure that the, the council and our finances are under. And I really appreciate all of the assistance in helping the public understand that tough decisions have to be made. And we should all be involved in understanding what's going on this year. Thank you.
Thank you. And now we bring up Christine Boyle.
Town Council meeting. Good evening, everyone. My name is Christine Boyle and I live on Nine Buckingham Drive. I'd like, I'd like to just thank the council for its ongoing diligence and transparency during this year's budget process. I'm proud of how Madison has been able to weather the COVID-two thousand twenty storm and it is largely due to the responsible budgeting of this governing body. Throughout twenty-twenty and prior years. Matt, excuse me, Madison survived all of the twenty-twenty hurdles without incurring additional debt. Which alone results in cost savings to all of us. Or without cutting all of the many services it provides to its residents, including, for example, sewer and garbage and recycling pickup. Services other towns charge their residents for separately. In addition, Madison provided direct financial relief to its residents and small businesses impacted by COVID through an electric utility bill relief application process. Which is expected to continue, as I understand it, to further support our town. Amazingly, all of this was achieved despite being down one million dollars in revenues. I support this year's budget, including the prudent two percent tax increase. It is reasonable to expect revenues to be down in twenty-twenty-one and yet our costs are expected to increase for, among other things, the debt service for the required upgrade. To the sewage treatment plant and increased pension costs. And it sounds like we have some additional hiring to do based on the other comments being made this evening. The budget, including the contemplated increase, is necessary, not only to plan for new recurring costs we're aware of today. But also to make sure we're ready for the next storm, whether it be another Hurricane Sandy, a random Halloween tornado. Or God forbid, another pandemic regardless of short-term federal funding we may receive to address immediate needs. Thank you for your time and thank you for listening.
Thank you, Christine. Now Alex Jennings.
Hi, everybody. This is Alex Jennings. I live at Six Edgewood Road. My comment is also about the budget and along the lines of Denise Katz's and Christine Boyle's, I just wanted to. First say how appreciative I am of how hard the council members and borough administrators work on the budget and. How you always have the best interests of all Madisonians in mind. At the last meeting, there were some who were upset that the council is proposing a two percent tax increase and. I just wanted to say that my feeling is that this increase is both reasonable and prudent. It seems to me it's better to do a little bit of an increase now and even if we have to do a little bit more next year, if that's necessary rather than. A bigger amount if we run into trouble with any of the various big expenses the borough might have coming up. One thing that came up in my presentation at the last meeting was that Maplewood. Has to have an eight percent increase, I believe, in property tax this year. So I know that I would like to avoid a situation where Madison would have to have that big of an increase and I think what the council is proposing is the best way to accomplish that. So thanks so much for everything you're, you're doing. Thank you.
Thank you. And Kathy Bailey.
Hi, this is Kathy Daly, twenty West End Avenue. Boy, I am just so impressed at how many Madison people are here on the, in the meeting tonight. Who just can't wait to pay more taxes. I am not one of those people. And I, I have one concern about the, the resolution you're going to pass tonight, Resolution number eighty-nine. Like I think Pat Rowe also said before, he didn't see it in the package. I was looking for it also. Since we haven't had a chance to look at it, if you don't plan to table it tonight. I respectfully request that you read the entire resolution into the record so that we all know what you're, what you're voting on. Since we really don't know right now. Also, I want to, I want to. Ask Mayor if you could clarify something you just said earlier. When you said that the additional COVID. when you said that the additional COVID relief funding that Madison is expecting to receive is not going to be able to be used in the current budget. As far as I know, that's not a requirement. In fact, my understanding is that the prioritization for that money, it's supposed to be providing relief for people in Madison and communities that it's going to as soon as possible, recognizing the hardships that we've encountered as a community over the last year and not necessarily be put into our surplus to be used for future years. And speaking of using surplus, I, I understand the last speaker, I'm sorry, I forget who it was, but the, the surplus, the amount of surplus that we used last year in 2020, by my calculations, and if this is incorrect, I hope somebody in the borough administration can, can correct me on it. But it looks to me like it was only 5% or 6% of the entire surplus that Madison is sitting on. And one, if you add all the surplus accounts together, 5% or 6% of the surplus, $1 million out of about 8 million. 18 billion. I, I don't understand how, how people think that we've really dipped deep into our pockets on this one. And I apologize if I sound a little annoyed, but really and truly, I am astounded that people can hardly wait to pay more taxes. I, like I said, I'm not one of those people. And I think that, that Madison has more resources available to it than are being acknowledged by the council. Thank you very much. And again, I apologize for my annoyed tone. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Kathy. So we'll address most of that during the presentation and the, as we go through the ordinances and resolutions related to the budget. And Dennis Schreiber.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Dennis Schreiber, Amelia Court. And good evening, fellow council, well, not fellow council, but other council members. Good to see you all. I'm going to sleep really well tonight, having listened to the prior speakers say how happy they are to pay more in property taxes. And I now recognize that I got to give you a lot of credit. All good flows from liberal Democrat progressive policies. So thank you very much. And to Alex Jennings, if you'd like to pay my property taxes for me, give me a call. I'd be more than happy to talk, talk to you about it. Anyway, I'm looking forward to Mr. Burnett's presentation on the budget because it's a critical time in our fiscal history here, fiscal, fiscal condition. Because he keeps claiming, and now all the presentations, everything that's on the CFO website, shows that we're on dire financial straits due to the potential loss of tax revenues from properties in Gerola Farms and out at Realogy. And that's probably true, but we're still sitting on a huge surplus in the electricity budget that you all know, you use it to siphon off to support the capital budget and other items. And thus mitigating the tax increases, property tax increases. But I'd like to know, and I, I, I'm looking forward to Jim's presentation, what capital budgeting projects have been cut from the budget going forward? Because if we're in such dire straits, I think we should go down to bare budget and do just what is actually necessary to do, not, is not what's nice to do. And I'll go back to my pet peeve. I'll save you $300,000 by telling you to cut those damn bump outs that are proposed on Green Avenue. Get rid of them. They don't do any good. So the other thing is, I'd like to know where headcount reductions are coming from, because I don't see anything about that. And, you know, I think you're trying to do the right things, but you're not doing it in the right way. So I look forward to Mr. Burnett's presentation in the next few minutes. Thanks very much.
Thank you, Dennis. And yes, we'll address some of those things. I do want to make a request to anyone that speaks, please direct your comments to the council members. You should not make any direct comments to someone that's already spoken to, out of respect. Certainly can make general comments about previous things that were said though. And Maria Slaybaugh.
Hi, Maria Slaybaugh, 28 Stafford Drive. Hello, Mayor, council members, borough staff. I would also like to comment on the budget. I've tried to get more informed about the budget each year. I'm not sure how well I'm doing, but I can't be the only one who sees just how complicated it is once you dive in. Council members have to be thinking ahead, have to consider all the factors that we've heard in some of the comments and seen in the presentations. And some of these are both tangible and intangible and known and unknown. And so balancing the worst and best case scenarios and also considering the impact on homeowners, who, you know, themselves may be struggling with impacts from COVID is, is no easy task. The council's response to COVID, the COVID crisis over the last year, by finding ways to offer financial relief and other support to the community signals to me that you get it and you get those challenges. So digging into some of the details, just echoing some of the other comments I've heard tonight, I'm concerned about some of the risk with our affordable housing obligations. The money for COVID from the state may or may not be coming, is not guaranteed, can't be used in every scenario. And clearly the revenue declines are concerning and we don't know if they'll ever ramp up. So while it may be easy to pick apart and challenge the budget, seems to set us up to be prepared for some very real possibilities. And I liken it in my own way to how I think of a household being run. You save for the what ifs, you buy insurance, you make the most informed decisions you can and try to balance it all. So I'm just looking to express my gratitude for the work involved in putting this budget together and the difficult decisions from those of you who are closest to this and understand the various trade offs and considerations. It's clear you've put the time in to propose what seems reasonable to me and to others that I've talked to about this. Clearly, no one wants a tax increase, especially considering the kinds of comments that come from that, from the public. And, you know, it's, it seems like you're doing what's necessary. And some of this reality is unavoidable. I'm a big fan of planning ahead. I'd also like to avoid a risk of a shock to our taxes if things don't go our way down the road. And so considering how little our taxes have gone up compared to the school or county or even other towns, it seems like this is a sensible approach to our budgeting. The proposal, the supporting points are backed up with solid rationale, transparency, lots of community input. And so I'd just like to state that I support the budget recommendations and thank you.
Thank you. And Joseph Gilmore.
Good evening, Mayor and Council, Joe Gilmore, 134 Central Avenue. I would like to thank the council for helping initiate the hiring process for the fire department. Can you tell me if we will get back to 14 career firefighters this year? And if so, with the timeline for their hires would be one week, one month, two months? I just want to reiterate how important it is to replace the career staff that is retired. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you, Joe. And as pointed out, the hiring list resolution is in place, like that process can go through. And as stated last council meeting, we want to move quickly on the first vacancy. And bring up Dave Luber.
Dave Luber, 7 Lawrence Road. Like the administration, I am very concerned about the future for Madison budgets. Revenues are not improving. The vacancy rates at Gerola Farms are scary. They do not bode well for future tax appeals. The borough is facing additional costs on another, a number of other fronts, as Jim has described before. We need to be prudent in our budgeting. We need to start getting ready now for what could be a difficult future. I support the budget and believe that the 2% tax increase is justified. Noting that the percentage of real estate taxes that actually go to fund municipal operations is about 22% of the total tax bill. A 2% increase in the municipal tax rate would result in a 0.44% tax increase, or about $66 a year for someone with a 2020 tax bill of $15,000. This is clearly affordable and helps Madison prepare for future eventualities. Measured against the 2014 strategic guidelines, this budget satisfies practically all the stated guidelines. One guideline where it does fail is in the amount to be transferred to the general capital fund. The budgeted transfer is below the 10% minimum set in guideline number five. But I understand why the borough had to cut somewhere. I do feel that multiple years of under transfers to the general capital fund would be unsustainable. Our streets would look like they did 10 years ago. I am hoping that the federal rescue money may be able to help us there. This is a solid, fiscally responsible budget for a difficult time. It should be approved.
Thank you. And Ross Snyder.
Hi, Council. Ross Snyder, 12 Palmeroy Road. I just want to say in a, in the face of this incredibly challenging environment that we're in on so many fronts, I'm very glad right now to live in Madison. Looking around and seeing neighboring towns in these precarious positions, I'm grateful for the resilient financial position we're in, thanks to many years of prudent fiscal management from a lot of people on this call right now. I also think it's interesting to characterize the ability to make tough decisions during tough times with a very small tax increase on the table as being excited about paying taxes. Obviously, the best tax increase is no tax increase. And I may not agree with every decision coming out of Hartley Dodge. But I'm glad our elected leaders are not over mortgaging our future or betraying our long term budgetary principles for short term gains. I know we'll get through this time and I'm confident in the ability of our mayor and our council to get us there. Thank you.
Thank you. And Dennis, I see your hand up, but there's only one comment period per person per period. You can comment again when we get to the second one. So please hang tight and we will get to you. I do, did want to just recognize, because those that attend the meeting cannot see how many, as we would say, are in the audience, as you would see if this was in person. And right now we have 36 attendees in the audience, but that being, that does include professional staff or our support staff. We'll now move on to the the budget information. So we'll start with Jim's presentation on the budget as is. And then we will go through the resolutions and so on that need to be done. And also joining on the screen is Valerie Dolan, our auditor. Welcome.
Mayor, I'm not sure if we want to do the vote on the resolution for the three year average and for the cap bank ordinance and then go into the discussion first. I think that's what we were anticipating.
Because we, without those who, you know, their action cannot take place. And so we, I'm, I'm doing this job, so I apologize.
So Resolution 88 is a resolution that's allowing the borough of Madison, we're requesting permission from the Division of Local Government Services to use a three year average on a, on a few small revenue items. As Administrator Cody has said in the past, the, in the budget, we cannot anticipate in 2021 revenues that are greater than what we actually collected in 2020. And there are certain lines where we know we should be able to get more in revenue this year than last year. So we're asking for those items to be approved through this three year average. We're not doing a lot of three year average because we think that would be extremely risky. So Resolution 88 basically asks for approval to do averaging on three items, other licenses, fees and permits and overnight user fees. So if there is any questions on that, I can answer that. If not, Mayor, take it over from there.
Any questions for Jim on this? May have a motion for Resolution, the Borough of, Resolution 88, 2021, Resolution Borough of Madison, County of Morris, State of New Jersey, requesting permission from BLBS for use of three year average for revenue anticipation for 2021.
Mayor, I move Resolution 88-2021. Second.
Any further council discussion? Roll call vote, please. Oh, I'm sorry, Rachel, I'm moving too fast here.
Just a minor point of clarification, since this was brought up in the first discussion period. The agenda mentions 89 and then the resolution is listed as 88. So for the record, are we clear on which resolution this is so that everyone knows your question?
This is Resolution 88. Resolution 89 is the entire budget document, which you were all emailed. The front cover of it, sheet three of the budget document, let me confirm that, it's not sheet two, three? Is, oh, thank you, Val, Val's here, filling me out, is basically the acknowledgement that, yes, we've received this document and that we're voting to introduce it. And that's all we're doing tonight is voting to introduce the budget. The whole concept is that the budget document is then up and available for a minimum of 28 days before the council actually votes to adopt it. So, you know, the school board, by example, has not really had, nothing wrong with the school board. I know they have their process of doing things. They don't have eight budget hearings like we do before their budget introduction. They introduce the budget and then people comment on it and then they vote on it. We've had eight meetings before this talking about the budget. Now we're going to introduce it. It will be out in the public for 28 days, available for everyone to see, review and discuss. And then council will vote on it in April.
And going back to comments on 89, the, the detail, the details are not actually in the resolution. It's in the, the fact that the sheet, that whole document. So that's why sort of it gets put out there for the public to see. So any further discussion, 88, Austria?
That, that document is available starting tomorrow online for the public.
It'll be available tonight. We'll make it available tonight. Yep.
Thank you.
But that's, that's Resolution 89.
Correct.
That's 89, 88 is the, the three year average resolution, which is the first. We have to kind of take this in a ministerial process, number one being this three year average resolution.
All right, any, see no further discussion, like a roll call vote on Resolution 88-2021.
Chris Bailey, left. Chris Byrne?
Yes.
Hoover?
Yes.
Chris Cohen?
Yes.
Chris Erlich?
Yes.
Mr. Landry?
Yes.
All right, I call up ordinance 13-2021 for first reading. Ask the borough clerk to read said ordinance by title.
Count the year 2021 ordinance to exceed the municipal budget appropriation limits and to establish a cap thing.
Mayor, I move ordinance 13-2021. Second.
All right. And again, this establishes the cap bank, but doesn't necessarily mean, mean we need it, but it's, this is on an annual basis. Any other comments, Jim, on this or?
Just that it's a ministerial process that basically allows us, gives us flexibility down the road if we need to increase the budget more, more, more than the standard appropriation cap allows.
All right, any further discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Bailey?
Yes.
Chris Byrne?
Yes.
Mr. Hoover?
Yes.
Chris Cohen?
Yes.
Chris Erlich?
Yes.
Mr. Landry?
Yes.
All right, now we move on to budget introduction.
Thank you, Mayor. Michael's going to turn the slides and for some reason I get kicked off my weaker than, on my not great home internet. Ray can jump in or if I bit under the weather. Thank you, Michael, for projecting this. You can advance to the next slide. This is a quick summary of the schedule that we have. I think everybody's seen it. You can go to the next slide, Michael. Tonight's agenda, we plan on talking about the resolution, which we did, the cap bank ordinance, which we did. We'll do the budget presentation. And then we will have a request to vote for the introduction of the budget. Once completed, those state documents, along with the user friendly budget, get sent down to Trenton. And as mentioned before, there will be a 20, a minimum 28 day period between introduction and adoption. So the budget can be out and seen by everyone. Next slide, please. This is a slide that we've seen in the past, the challenges of various towns due to COVID. I found out that our good friends in Chatham unfortunately had to issue emergency bonds to cover cash flows. We did not. Other towns you've seen in previous presentations had to do that. Chatham, I believe, is going to be introducing a budget closer to a 3% increase. So there, there are a number of towns that are struggling. And we're, I think, in actually better position than most. You can go to the next slide, Michael. I wanted to update council on just three of the revenues that are, that have been problematic. You can see 2019, we collected $175,000 in court revenue. 2020, we collected $67,000. 2020, we collected $67,000. 2021, the numbers are extremely suppressed. So there's more than likely going to be a significant reduction in the number, in the amount of court revenue that's coming in this year as well. Nothing's, nothing is pointing towards it getting better anytime soon. You can go to the next slide, Michael. This is parking fees for the daily parking fees. See the little picture of the Crescent? And there's daily parking behind the Public Safety Building. The lots are empty. We're barely getting any revenue in at all for daily parking. I don't think we posted February's, which is why it's at zero. But you can see in 2019, we collected $80,000, and 2020, we collected $20,000. I don't know what we're going to collect in 2021, but unless things change significantly and people start going back into New York City, the number's going to be much, much smaller than prior years. You can go to the next slide, Michael. Interest on deposits in 2019, if you look at the bottom column there, you see $425,000. In 2020, it's $124,000. In 2021, my guesstimate is it's going to be somewhere in the magnitude of $50,000, $60,000 not on a trader on Wall Street trying to determine what short-term interest rates are going to be. But I can tell you that the revenues are off significantly. You can see how much they dropped off in 2020, and they're not coming back. You can go to the next slide, please, Michael. If you add all of those up, just those three revenue lines, it's safe to assume that the revenues could be $600,000 less across those three lines. It's just not a good situation. And as some people reference, there's nothing that's indicating it's going to get better anytime soon. So I just need to, need to stress that, that that's clearly a problem. Next slide, please. Budget timing. We have to introduce now. The state has come out and said that the U.S. Treasury is expected to issue further regulations and guidance on how local governments can use the funds that we are going to receive. And it's uncertain when we're going to get those regulations and guidance. And the current introduction and a budget and adoption dates for municipalities and counties will not be extended. So we have to basically introduce tonight. If you go to the next slide, you'll actually see the local finance notice. These are the rules that are given to us by the state of New Jersey. And it says in the highlight, municipal introduction and approval of budget has typically, it's supposed to be done by February, but they're always giving us an extra month and a half, has to be done by March 30th. So it's March 22nd. That's why we're doing it now. Adoption has to be done by the end of April. So the state is basically coming out and saying, you have to introduce your budget now. And some people are saying, well, we're getting some money from the federal government. What does that mean? And the state is basically saying, it means nothing. You're not supposed to use that money or consider that money in this year's budget. We're not getting any of the money until later on in the year. We don't know how much of the money we're getting until later on in the year. We don't know what the rules and regulations are going to be on that money. It looks like we're going to get a significant amount. The last thing I want to do is make a mistake and make an assumption in our budget based on that money, and then we don't get it because we didn't follow the rules and guidance. We don't have the rules and guidance to follow. So we need to just move forward with a budget now based on what we know. Next slide, please, Michael. So the COVID relief money that we are getting, based on what we are hearing, we've not had any official from the Treasury or DLGS is a significant dollar amount. This is money just for the municipality. It is not the money that residents are going to get in the $1,400 checks. It's not money that the schools are going to get. I reached out to the schools and said, how much money are you going to get? They're like, we don't know, but we're not supposed to budget for it. I said, good, same with us. Preliminary indications are we're going to get $1.7 million. That is a tremendous amount of money. However, it's not going to even fill the revenue gap of the loss that we had last year and this year. So that's one thing to keep in mind. The second thing is preliminary indications are telling us, as Pat Rowe mentioned, cannot be used for tax relief and can be used for capital items. So while the rules are not set, that seems to be the guidance. So administration is saying, we're not making any, shouldn't make any decisions now. In council's mind, you all should be thinking that this goes towards a capital item. And Dennis Schreiber said, what if we cut in capital? Go back and look at the five-year capital plan that we presented back in January, and you'll see that it's millions of dollars less than what we have in 2022, 2023, and 2024. We cut significant amount of capital projects because of that. This money may be able to fund one of those capital projects, but we're not getting the money until the, later on in 2020, 2021, and we're only getting half of it then and half of it in 2022. So that's where that money should be going. Right now, council really will figure it out when we get there. We don't know the rules or guidelines. We, the bottom line is the last point. These are important funds to the borough, and we don't want to run afoul of any rules or regulations on how they can be spent. That would be disastrous if, for some reason, we made a mistake and didn't get the $1.7 million. That would be terrible fiduciaries on all of our parts. So I'm asking council to be patient. I'm asking for the public to be patient in regard to that.
Valerie is waving her hand there.
In the guidelines that are starting to come out, you have until 2024, December of 2024, to spend those funds so that you can properly budget and properly spend those funds in accordance with the grants, about accordance with the regulations, and when you can develop the appropriate use of those funds. They've given a lengthier period of time where some of the other funds, they shut you off, and you had to spend them very quickly. These have a much longer trail, which is going to be good for it when it comes time to budget and be able to use that funds at a later date.
Thank you.
Thanks, Val. That's mentioned on the bullet, but I'm talking fast and.
Exactly.
So, Michael, you can go to the next slide. Just as a reminder, these are the department appropriations. The slide has been presented before, but I just want to show everyone the various departments. And then the next slide, the reason I have Family Feud on here is because the mayor, from time to time, will have students come in and be the mayor for a day or be a council member for the day. And he plays a game of Family Feud. And we play the song, and we ask the students the question, what are the top six largest department costs in the borough? And no one ever gets sewage treatment. It's just unfortunate that no one thinks about it. But it's, it's one of the top six, and it's just important to notice and to know these. They're all extremely important. Police Department, Public Works, Fire, Garbage Recycling Library, and sewage are all critical. So I just wanted to point those out. Michael, you can go to the next slide. This is the actual budget in brief that we produce every year. This has some slight changes from the March 8 item that was, budget that was presented, basically grants. We get more clarity on the grants that we're receiving. So none of the numbers on this have changed with the exception of grant revenue and operating expenses. Other than that, it stayed the same. This includes a 2% tax increase on existing ratables. And, Michael, you can go to the next slide. There's nothing that's changed on the water utility. And, Michael, you can go to the next slide. There's nothing that's changed on the electric utility in terms of the assumptions. Excuse me. This, this is obviously the question of the evening. Why is administration asking for 2% tax increases? You can go to the next slide, Michael. We have a tremendous list of concerns that you've heard of and that were mentioned this evening. Revenues are down by over $1 million. We have to acknowledge that and acknowledge that there are certain revenues, like parking, like interest, that may not come back for years. Reserves are dropping. Free balances dropped $2.7 million in the last two years. We pull out five, over $5 million of municipal surplus that we use in the following year's budget. And it's down to, you know, the free balance is down to, I think, over $3 million. So it's millions of dollars lower than it has been in the past. We have significant tax appeals coming. We talked about that at prior council meetings. We have a mandated substation repair that could be $800,000 or more. We have a tremendous affordable housing obligation that if we don't get federal tax credits, we will have to pay, and that could be up to $12 million. All of our collective bargaining agreements are expiring at year end, so future labor costs are unknown. We have new debt payments in 2022, sewage treatment, that are going to be $300,000 or more based on a $9 million renovation of the sewage treatment plant. And we have other increasing costs. One that I pointed out the last meeting was the joint insurance, when just coming and saying, hey, guess what? Your workers' comp is going to be increasing by $90,000 for sure, could increase by $300,000 if certain legislation passes. Our pension costs continue to rise. And I think that's the most important thing to acknowledge, that if our taxes have only gone up 4% since 2013 on an existing home, yet the pension bill for the police and fire has gone up 36% in that time. And the garbage costs have gone up 20% in that time. We have to increase taxes because the price of things are going up. It's just, and, and we could just cut all capital and have a 0% tax increase, but then the roads would fall apart, and the water system would fall apart, and we wouldn't have trucks to plow the snow. This budget includes the 2% tax increase, and it's there because we want to continue to do our best to maintain the level of service that residents expect from plowing, from everything. So garbage removal, the Chatham Borough, you pay for garbage removal in Chatham Borough. Chatham Borough, you pay for sewage. You've got a separate sewage bill in Chatham Borough. You don't have that here. In Madison, it's embedded into your taxes. So there's a tremendous number of concerns, but all of them together point to the, to a 2% tax increase being reasonable. And I am sure that come April, I'll be able to present to council a list of what the other towns in our area are doing in terms of increases. And they'll all be doing 2%, 3%, 4%, Maplewood, was it 8%? Now it looks like they're at 9%. So I'll be able to present that, and obviously council will have a better, and the public will have a better indication that all municipalities are in this difficult situation. Michael, you can go to the next slide, please. You've seen this before, but I actually expanded on this a little bit. You can see that from 2013 to 2020, Madison's property tax, municipal, not school or county, Madison's municipal property tax from 2013 to 2020 has only gone up 4%. Chatham Borough, Flower Park, Mountain Lakes, all the others have gone up significantly more. You can actually see the breakdown in the tax rate change in the little table to the left, where it actually went down from 2013 to 2014, went up a little bit, 2015, 2016, 17, 18, 19, 20. You can see the changes. If you add them up, you're going to say, hey, Jim, that doesn't add up to 4%. But that's because it has to do with math. You go from 100, and then you go down 1 and 1/2%, and you go up 1 and 1/2%, you don't get back. It just has to do with arithmetic. It also has to do with the fact that our tax rate only goes to three decimal points, and it gets the average, it gets, it has to get averaged out beyond three decimal points. So, but shouldn't be talking about arithmetic. I should be talking about the fact that it's only gone up 4% from 2013 to 2020. So we need to, administration strongly recommends that we do a 2% tax increase this year. Michael, you can go to the next slide. Everyone has the ability to go on our website and type in their taxes and see the breakdown of the taxes. This gray box here shows a nice little widget that Michael put on our website. Where if you type in your taxes, in this case, I typed in $50,000, you can see the 2020 column there shows the breakdown of $15,000 between County Board of Ed and Borough of Madison. It then goes backwards and calculates the 2013 tax breakdown. So you can see this house went up from $13,000 to $15,000. There was an $1,878 increase, which you can see in the bottom of the column. Of that increase, $127 is what we're talking about today. That's the municipal portion of the budget. The other parts of the tax increase were due to the county and the Board of Education. So the tax increase of 1,878, 70%, of it was due to the schools. 23% of that increase, $434 of the 1,878, was the county, and only 6% was the borough. So if people are anxious about increasing property taxes, I respect that. I'm a resident. I understand. It's just important for you to understand where those increases over the last few years have come from. Go to the next slide. We've talked about this. Maplewood's taxes are going up significantly. A lot of other towns are as well. Michael, you can go to the next slide. So the 2% tax increase, to kind of summarize, we have our big list of concerns. We've only increased it 4% in the last eight years. It will keep us on firm financial footing. Costs like police going up 36% in, from 2013, police and fire pension, garbage going up 20%, costs go up every year. COVID relief funds cannot be used for tax relief. I don't want to even consider that because we could run afoul and lose that money. And then finally, the professionals recommended, Val, we'll talk in a few minutes, but I want to advance to the next slide, which is a quote from our bond counsel. Steve Rogat's our bond counsel, and he says, "Rating agencies greatly prefer to see gradual increases in property taxes. Agencies would consider a town poorly managed if they did a number of 0% tax increases, followed by a significant tax increase. Long-term planning is important. Towns that have rating agencies, towns that rating agencies consider poorly managed are typically put on credit watch or have their credit rating lower." In other words, if we do and continue to go down this path of only having a 4% tax increase and not doing any tax increases over the next few years, we will be in a situation where we have to do, be like Maplewood and do an 8% or 10% tax increase. First of all, that's problematic. Second, it could, it's poor management. We need to smooth it out and make it smaller amounts. Third, we could lose our AAA credit rating because of it. So for those reasons, administration is asking for a 2% tax increase. And Val, if you want to jump in here now and talk about some of the other towns and what your thoughts are.
Good evening, everyone. Yes, we've been, obviously, this is the height of municipal budget season, and you are, many towns are plighted with the exact same situations in areas that you are. Fortunately, Madison is, once again, in a really, you are in a very good financial position. You were able to weather what the pandemic has catastrophically caused other municipalities. Within, even within our own county, we've seen towns that were not prepared. So diligence that you've put in budgets in previous years helped you, are helping you weather this loss of revenue. But like Jim said, the rebound of these revenues is a really unknown factor. We don't know, I mean, especially areas in these towns that had towns of yours and other towns that had train lines. I mean, are they ever going to rebound to where we are? We saw them before, and you were budgeting larger revenues for them. When I went through the budget and was reviewing everything with Jim, one of the things we did look at is, like, you did pass your resolution to utilize the three-year average for some revenue items, but you chose not to use it for all of them, which is where the auditors would come in on the conservative side and say, that's the right thing to do. You used it in the areas where the rebound more than likely will pick back up again and not in the areas where you were getting a little too risky. Madison has phenomenally done a wonderful job, probably one of the best of all of our clients in transparency. You've given more information to your residents all throughout this whole process. Very much explanation has gone out on everything that you've done, and you continue to forward think on a lot of these things. One of your residents spoke earlier about the plans that you had when you structured your fund balance and you structured capital. Yeah, this is the, probably the area that you did have to take a little bit of a haircut on this year just to make this work. And, you know, you want to be able to say, we're going to rebound and put that capital back to where it was. Because as we remember several years ago, we had taken from capital, taken from capital, and you needed to put, bring that back. The budget that you do have presented in front of you, I did want to highlight that you're still over $1 million below your appropriations cap, and you're about $53,000, even with the 2% increase, above your, below your tax levy cap, nor are you utilizing the additional $793,000 in your cap bank, in your tax levy cap bank. So there, and so when I look at those items, you are not dipping too far down. And I feel that there's nothing in this budget that will negatively impact you, and I feel that you're riding out yet in this pandemic, and we're not really sure where it was going to be and where we will fall in 2021. Like Jim highlighted, and I, on that, the federal funding, it is wonderful, but there are some clear-cut things that we know the monies can't be spent on. Property tax and pension are too clear as a bell in that ruling on the federal stimulus. That money is really not, it's more of a stimulus. That package is a stimulus package. They want you to encourage to stimulate your economy, not solve problems of future of past budget mistakes. So as a result, that guidance isn't out yet, and And hopefully you'll be able to do that to fulfill certain things that you need to do going forward, not as a look back revenue source. If you have any questions, I'm still on the line to answer any questions. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Val, very helpful.
We'll go through a couple more slides, Mayor, and then um, we can finish up with questions if that's okay. So uh, I, I, uh, Carrie down in the clerk's office always says, you know, maybe I have to put the tough stuff in the middle, but make it a sandwich and end with something nice. Um, so I want to uh, go to the next slide, Michael, and remind the residents again that um, you know, we've had a very modest tax increase on the municipal side of only 4%. This will budget only counts for 21.8% of the total tax bill that you get. If you go to the next slide, um, this is a slide that's been presented other times. Uh, the average home, which has an assessed value of 667, 200, it's a nice little center hall colonial on Green Village Road. Um, is uh, going to be um, paying municipal taxes of 29,000, or they did pay 29, or $2,900. And there's a decimal point error on my, on my math there. But um, they paid $2,915 in uh, 2020. And for, for that $2,900, they got all those services. Fire department, police department, garbage, yard waste, senior sewage, health. Thank goodness for the health department this year. Um, fire hydrants and streetlights are something that we get for free because our utilities pay for it, other towns actually have to pay per streetlight for the electric utility. All these items, they get a 2% tax increase on this particular home represents a $4.20 per month increase in their municipal property taxes. So uh, it's a relatively small amount. I think it's important and I think it's prudent to do it. Um, the biggest concern we have are the tax appeals. And uh, and, um, and that's it. So I'll uh, obviously sit back and answer any questions I can have. One thing I would like to say just to open, um, Tom Harrow and Kudus talked about the open space budget. That's not a budget that we actually vote on here. Open space is presented in, in terms of the activity for the prior year and the potential activity for 2021. Projects are listed, but each individual project gets voted on via ordinance when council determines to appropriate that money. This budget does not include the open space um, historic preservation and recreation trust fund budget. It just, um, during our budget hearings, we present that information to council as an FBI.
And plus we'll have, in, in addition to when projects are recommended and the council discusses those, we do periodic, periodic updates as to where we are. So, um, I'll, I'll just take off the uh, comments and questions and just say, Jim, excellent presentation. Um, Val, thank you for your input, especially your ability to compare it to other municipalities. It is a um, honor to be a mayor in such a well-run town where we can have these discussions as opposed to um, should we bond to pay, pay the, the bills that are backing up and, and other discussions that are happening. Um, if my memory serves me well, as I shared the um, my opening comments from a year ago. You know, I, I, I do remember in the um, conversations, you know, in good old days of before uh, pandemic and of uh, January, February, we were looking at a 2% increase last year. We um, shaved that to 1%, but I think uh, Jim kept on saying, this is the impact you're going to have by just going down 1%. You're, you're going to be almost committed, you're, you're going to be committed to a 2% for next year. And, and so this is, in a way, is no surprise. And um, what is a surprise is how impactful this pandemic has been on Madison, but our ability to handle it. But our, we must look forward to many years of um, making sure we do the right thing. I, my, early in my council career, I remember having to vote on a budget that had a substantial increase and that uh, is not where we ever want to be. Um, other comments or questions? Ostry?
Uh, thank you, Mayor. Um, I, you know, I, I had written some notes down, but I mean, Jim's presentation covers everything that I wanted to say. Um, and I feel like we're being very responsible uh, with a 2% um, tax increase. And we're covering all our services. We aren't like other towns surrounding uh, that have to now borrow dollars to uh, cover their operating costs. We have the opportunity, when the federal stimulus money comes, to put that towards a project. We have a very significant project, our sewage treatment plant expansion, where those dollars, and that's where the appropriate place is, you use a one-time infusion of money into a capital project. And then you, you clear up, you know, dollars uh, that we do have and directed towards our, our, our operating budget. So you know, we're in a really good position because we have managed our surplus supplies well. And we haven't overdone it with the, the surplus so that we put ourselves in a position where uh, we have to raise our taxes in, in a very um, uh, very uh, you know, active manner where we raise them very high. Like as Bob mentioned, many years ago, we did have to. So I think this is a very good budget and a reasonable budget.
And I just want to say, that's one of my biggest concerns is that we do 000, we have to do an 8%. I'd much rather do 2%, maybe next year we can do 2% and, and do it in a gradual way. Uh, the rating agencies would really frown upon it and it's just not the right way, the right way to go about it. Thank you.
Uh, Deb?
So you answered most of mine, just a couple of questions, and I'm actually going to go in reverse order and start with the questions and then my comment. Um, just for clarification on slide 13, um, I'm sorry, slide, slide 12. The court, health, um, and construction. Um, I, yeah, that one. I think that's um, our portion of the cost for those three departments after the shared services. So we take in more for the court, but that's what we get as the actual appropriation.
Correct, for court and health, um, construction is the, the whole enchilada and then the revenue just comes in um, on a different revenue line. I don't net it out for um, uh, for construction. We're not actually getting a payment from Chatham, we're just receiving their fees.
Fees.
Where in um, uh, in the, the court, we're actually receiving monies from the various towns to run the court. So I, I, I net that number on here, you're correct.
Um, and then on slide 11, I just wanted to say thank you for reaching out to Danielle at the schools just to find out and make sure, I know we've been working on, working together with them and, and trying to make sure everybody's on the same page as much as we can with all the differences. Um, so that's appreciated. And then my last um, comment question, I guess, is on slide six, and you and I have talked about this um, several times. And I just want to make sure people realize these three revenues are not the only ones that are down. Um, and Jim and I went back and forth and he had to pick and choose as far as this could have gone on and on. Um, but as a reminder, with the parking permits that are paid, we did reduce that for people that were permit holders, I believe, and Jim or Bob, you can correct me if I'm wrong, um, by half for this year. So if you had a permit last year, we reduced your fee for this year and are only charging full fees. We don't have those numbers of how many permits are even being asked for, but that's going to be a revenue loss just by the fact that people will be paying less. So there's lots more revenues that are down other than those three. Um, and I appreciate that you couldn't, you would have had 18 slides just on, on revenues coming down. So I, I appreciate, you know, you picked three of the big ones that people could understand and were clear to understand. And I appreciate all your work and questions and conversations.
It, it, to, to point this out, these are the daily parking revenues. Um, we, we book them separately between the permits and the daily parking, the $5 per so. And Deb, you're 100% right, there's many other lines that are down, but I just wanted to show these because we've been.
That was all, thank you.
Okay, uh, Bob?
Um, I guess that's really just three general comments. Uh, when Jim was showing the small property tax increases dating back, I believe, from 2014 to current. Um, what we didn't talk about, but what I think is very important is during that period, we had the October snowstorm, Hurricane Irene and Hurricane Sandy. This town was able to weather those costs without borrowing a dime, without having to go to the bond market to fund anything. And yet, take into account very low tax increases like that. In addition, we maintained our AAA rating. So to me, this budget represents what's historically been Madison. Good conservative approaches today, doing what's best for the residents today, but also planning for the future. One thing that I will comment on right now is um, the tax appeals, which is something I do for a living. I think there's tremendous exposure there. So I definitely think that 2% is warranted. Um, I think we have to keep a good eye on that bucket, but I do fully support this budget. I think it's right in line with the way Madison has and always will do uh, its budgets.
Maureen? You're unmuted there, thank you.
I'm going to call attention to slide 18 again, the list of concerns. Going forward, we're down a million dollars. It's, we don't know where it was going to come back. We've got affordable housing, we've got debt payments for the sewage treatment plants. We've got a lot of things coming up that, that's, that, that we, we could put those um, stimulus money towards. And uh, I mean, we wouldn't, wouldn't be hard-pressed to use the funds, so. Um, I think we've, 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 we've got to be, I think the 2% is, is a responsible way of, of um, covering our bases.
Rachel?
Thank you, Jim. I want to just add um, my appreciation to what many, many residents and fellow council members have said tonight, which is that your attention to really teaching us all uh, year after year, and then each year, you know, six, eight times in the budget season about how the numbers come together and what they all mean, is so admirable. And I think uh, your ability to take these numbers and make them understandable, uh, turn them into a narrative that we can understand how they impact our lives and, and services that we pay for and, and the uh, capital that we invest in, the capital projects we invest in, just shows a real commitment to communication and transparency that I think makes Madison a model uh, for the state, frankly, in terms of the amount of information that's provided and the special care that you take to explain it to us um, in these great presentations. I've been able to point people in other towns to the Rosinet uh, annual budget at a glance page, which includes links to every presentation. And I just think um, that no one can claim in seriousness that we have a lack of transparency, um, given the great presentations that you've made this year and previous years. We talked a little bit about um, the surplus, which I understand we, we're striving to, to rename the fund balance, which is the correct term. Um, it's hard to, to shake that term surplus because it's become um, just a, a real buzzword in our uh, municipal and political talk here. But I think it's important to highlight the moves that were made last year in 2020 to bring the fund balance of the surplus down. Last year, we um, used $1 million of our water surplus to fund the water meter project that is going to go forward hopefully this year after a short delay, hopefully, uh, not, not a lengthy one, um, due to pandemic. We um, we trimmed certain budget lines last year and utilized more surplus in the budget as revenue. And we increased the anticipated revenues, which reduces surplus generation by saying that we expect to make more money in 2020. Therefore, there'll be less surplus that is unexpected revenue that comes in above and beyond what we anticipated. Clearly, things could not have gone, you know, more differently. In fact, our revenues dropped significantly. And then I think the thing that many of us has touched, have touched on is that appropriating for just one extraordinary project, like um, needing to um, fund a significant portion of the municipally sponsored affordable housing project or the $1.5 million radio, radio system that's coming up for our combined public safety and utility um, departments to use would be um, you know, it, it would bring our surplus down dramatically. But I think we have, we're looking at a windfall here with this $1.7 million. And that would be such, just a brilliant stroke if we could take that 1.7 and put it towards the radio system or put it towards um, our $9 million sewage treatment uh, upgrade project, which is going to cost us $300,000 of the year for 30 years. So I think there's also a nice symmetry though, when we talk about that $300,000 a year for debt service for the sewage treatment upgrade. Um, that is approximately equal to what this 2% tax increase was generated. And even without any of the uh, financial unknowns that you've talked about tonight um, and in previous meetings, we know we're already on the hook for the sewage treatment plant upgrade. We need to expand capacity of the sewage treatment plant, which is nearing capacity already. Um, if we have any potential development in either um, in, in Chatham or in Madison, um, we will be maxed out on sewage treatment. Um, we need to make repairs to aging equipment. Some items, we only have one of, and if they go down, we are in big trouble. Um, we don't want to have a backup or an overflow at the sewage treatment plant. And we need to meet new DEP requirements where we need to move, remove more phosphorus from the outflow or watershed to avoid problems like what happened at like the Patcom where they had this blue-green algae growth last year due to all the fertilizer and phosphorus in their storm out flow. So this is already on the books. We are upgrading the sewage system. It's going to cost us $300,000 a year. This 2% tax increase covers the cost to flush our toilets. I mean, we need to be realistic here and dispel the notion that municipal taxes exist outside of the financial world where costs go up year upon year. You mentioned the pension costs increasing 36%, garbage hauling increased 20%. We need to upgrade our sewage treatment plant to the tune of $9 million. And artificially depressing perceived costs to the borough by keeping uh, a tax increase to 0% is just going to lead to sticker shock and untold outrage, which, you know, we all want to avoid as elected officials and prudent administrators. So I think when we look, I mean, setting aside the unknown, which are scary enough, we already know we have significant costs that we will be facing um, immediately and in the years to come. And this 2% tax increase, which you demonstrated is quite modest um, relative to the total tax bill and relative to a, a monthly payment of approximately $4 for a home of an average value of $667,000 in the borough, is a reasonable way and a, and frankly, a prudent way to address the uh, our financial picture. So I thank you for making a really compelling um, presentation that helps us understand this all better. And um, I look forward in the next, I guess, 28 days we have on the calendar to um, ironing out any, you know, additional questions that come up. But I think you're in really good shape and um, looking forward to, to bringing this up and uh, not adopting it tonight, but to, what's the verb? What are we doing?
Introduction.
We're introducing the budget tonight. And I want to thank you for getting us to this point.
Mayor, I would just add a couple of comments if I could. Um, this budget has a million-dollar reduction in the amount of money we're putting towards the capital projects and capital improvement fund. So that's going to be a concern down the road. How can we get it back to the $3.8 million that we had in 2019? We're at $2.8 million now. So that is a concern. If we were to do zeros, there would be no way we could ever get that dollar amount back up to um, i- in any sort of um, logical or appropriate way. The second thing is um, there was discussion about us having ample reserves. And uh, I explained it at the last council meeting, Councilman Landrigan mentioned it. Uh, tax appeals are going to be, have a tremendous impact, not only on the revenue, but on our tax appeal reserve. We have $600,000 in our tax appeal reserve. And when we have to pay out an award, when someone wins a tax appeal, we have to pay it out for the schools, for the county and for us. And I can tell you that $600,000 is not a lot of money. The office buildings in Madison pay $6 million in taxes. So if they get a 10% reduction in their taxes and they win those tax appeals and they have multiple years of them, that money will all be gone. So uh, there's, there's lots of reasons to be thinking that a lot of our reserves are going to be dropping.
Thank you, Jim. And just to reinforce uh, Rachel's re, opening comments and other comments about your thorough work. I, as I often have a chance to do, I talk to uh, mayors and council members in uh, many different towns and was talking to this one person in particular and uh, saying, you know, what, what are you looking at um, for uh, your next year's budget? And the answer was, and this was within the last two weeks, I'm not sure the, the, it's still in. I'm not sure the, the, it's still in committee. It doesn't, hasn't come to the council yet, and you look at how many, how much time uh this body has spent on it and how much information you put it there. So um I just, it was, it was a way to say thank you very much. Um, any other comments or questions? I, I, I think what I've heard and uh the council can correct me otherwise is the consensus that this uh, the introduction will uh be on the budget as Jim has presented and with the document that we shared earlier today. So uh with that, I would ask the clerk to read the um the statement. Is you there? Did you lose Liz?
I hit the ru- I hit the wrong button.
There you go. Okay, thank you. I was a little worried.
I'm reading and calling the roll and no one's answering me. This is uh Resolution eighty-nine, two thousand twenty-one, Resolution of the Borough of Madison, adopting the twenty twenty-one budget and tax resolution. That's the title.
Yeah, and you need to read, read the uh statement?
Oh, yes. Upon introduction and adoption, the twenty twenty-one budget and tax resolution will be published by summary in the Madison Eagle on March the twenty-fifth, two thousand twenty-one, with a public hearing date set for Monday, April the twenty-sixth, two thousand twenty-one. At eight P M via teleconference, at which time and place, all interested individuals will have an opportunity to be heard. There will be consideration for final adoption. A copy of the budget as introduced will be filed in the Madison Public Library and the County Library and posted on the borough's website for public review.
Mayor, I move uh Resolution eighty-nine dash twenty twenty-one.
Second.
Any further discussion? We'll call vote, please.
Ms. Bailey?
Yes.
Burn?
Yes.
Mr. Hoover?
Yes.
Ms. Cohen?
Yeah.
Ms. Erlich?
Yes.
Mr. Landrigan?
Yes.
All right. Thank you. Again, we'll have the hearing the end of April, April twenty-sixth. Um, onto next agenda item, communications and petitions.
Uh, yes, Mayor. Mayor and Council received two items, an email dated March ninth from uh resident David Steckedy regarding Resolution eighty-seven uh two thousand twenty-one and an email dated March eighteenth from resident Krista Klein uh regarding the recent anti-Asian attacks in Atlanta, Georgia, and signs uh thin blue line signs at local businesses downtown.
Thank, thank you very much. And um we'll go on to uh, again, discussions. This will probably be a fairly brief one. This is the uh revised bylaws. It's been under uh Wick Way for uh multiple years. Uh, Mayor Bruce Harris and I started with this a couple of years ago, so we're finally bringing it to the finish line. The joint meeting approved the uh bu- bylaws as proposed and with uh minor corrections that were to be done. Just distributed the copy of the final version earlier today. So we'll be looking for uh council uh approval bylaws under Resolution ninety-seven. Any uh further discussion or questions? All right. Uh, before we go on to ordinance for hearing, um and any people that are attending the meeting and here probably have seen this pop up on your screens that um a shooting in a supermarket in Boulder, Boulder, Colorado. Um, obviously, it is early. Um, you don't know whether it was targeted or what the story behind it is. We do know that one police officer was killed. We know that no matter where a shooting happens, if we identify to with any person that uh was killed and murdered, we feel it personally as a connection. And um our hearts and thoughts go out to the families who will be affected by the shooting in Boulder, Colorado. The, the family of the police officer who went to work today to protect those in Boulder, Colorado, and is not coming home. And our thoughts go to all those who wear the uniform across this country to protect. Uh, with that, we will move on to ordinance for hearing. Uh, will the clerk please read the statement?
The ordinance scheduled for hearing was introduced by title and passed on a first reading at the regular meeting of council held on March eighth, two thousand twenty-one, was posted and filed according to law, and copies were made available to the general public requesting scene.
I call up ordinance twelve dash twenty twenty-one for second reading. Ask the clerk to read said ordinance title.
Ordinance of the Borough of Madison, amending chapter one sixty-six of the Borough Code entitled Streets and Sidewalks to amend the sidewalk reimbursement program.
I open the hearing to anyone in the public that wishes to comment on this ordinance. Um, and uh Dennis, you have your hand up. Is that for this ordinance? If so, you may comment, but if it's through a general comment, uh, we can, we'll get you later.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. No, I have it up, but it's not for this general ordinance. I will wait until later.
Very good. Yep. Thank you, Dennis. Being no one else, I close the hearing.
Mayor, I move ordinance uh twelve, there's two thousand twenty-one.
Second.
And council discussion. Uh, Rachel.
I'd just like to uh lend my support to this. I think, you know, one thing we've all learned and, and you hearken back to Mayor in your opening comments about how we've all been spending more time outside walking and enjoying the streets of Madison in the last year. Uh, I think this is a really admirable way to um incentivize and encourage residents to improve their sidewalks, to improve uh safety and accessibility throughout town, something that all of us are paying a lot more attention to now. And um I'm glad that the borough is making this move to uh essentially fund a public-private partnership to improve sidewalk conditions throughout the borough.
Thank you. And to uh for everyone to understand, it's not only increases the amount of the share that the borough does, but it puts in place an adjustable uh share so that we're, we're not trying to catch up with uh prices that have not changed. Any other comments? We'll call vote, please.
Ms. Bailey?
Yes.
Ms. Burn? Ms. Burn?
Yes.
Mr. Hoover?
Yes.
Ms. Cohen?
Yes.
Ms. Erlich?
Yes.
Mr. Landrigan?
Yes.
And let's see if I can do this by memory here. It's uh, sit on the uh, uh, I declare ordinance twelve dash twenty twenty-one uh passed and uh finally approved and ask the clerk to publish notice there of a newspaper and file the ordinance according to the law. All right. And now we go on to our second of two invitations for uh discussions. And uh same rules apply, uh except for now, you may comment on any topic. Again, try to keep your comments to three minutes, but we will give you a one-minute grace period and stop you at four. You only get to uh comment one time. And uh so if you're interested in speaking, please uh ra- raise your hand and so we don't close it before you had your chance. And with that, uh, Ben Etterbacher.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and, and Council. Again, thank you very much for the opportunity to speak. I've always admired Jim's presentations because I think they're very detailed and I think they're very good. But they still raise a lot of issues. And I know Jim mentioned my, my co- responded to my comments specifically that uh things had been cut. But I'd like to know, really, Jim, are there headcount reductions going on or being considered? Because if we're going to share the pain that uh you have described that we are about to face, I think we all should share the pain, not only just property taxpayers, but everybody, you know? Why not? It hurts, but it has, has to be done. Secondly, I know you said you did cap, cut millions from the capital budget, and I think that's great and you're to be commended for that. But let's keep going. And please tell me you got rid of those bump outs, please. That I'll save you three hundred thousand dollars right there if you eliminate those. Uh, and my final comment, and I, I know, and I don't mean this in a joking way, but listening to fellow Madison residents comment previously about how wonderful it is to pay more in taxes because everything is great here. Yeah, everything is pretty good. It's a, it's a well-run town. However, you get to a certain point when people don't want to pay any more taxes. And to those, my fellow uh Madison residents who I will not name by name, Mr. Mayor, because you admonished me. If anyone wants to pay my incremental taxes on that side of the aisle, they're more than welcome to do it. I'll be happy to let them pay my incremental taxes. I think we can keep taxes low. Please don't tell me you're going to raise the water budget rates. And who knows what the school board is going to do because you, as the council, have no control over that. But there's a whole lot of hurt coming our way. And if you want to keep this town a viable, attractive place to live, you will cut the expenses and not raise taxes. Thank you very much. I appreciate the opportunity to speak with you all.
Thank you, Dennis. And now, uh, Matt Keen.
Hi, Mayor. Can you hear me?
Uh, yes.
All right, great. Thanks very much. Hi, Council. I just wanted to say thanks very much for moving forward.
Yeah, name and address.
Sorry. Matt Keen, Alma Avenue, Madison. I volunteer for the fire department and I was just on here uh two weeks ago, and I just wanted to follow up with it. Thanks for moving forward with the hiring list, and I wanted to follow it up specifically with a question. When we've been talking about the services that have been provided for the town of Madison over the years, we've always been at a staffing level of fourteen career firefighters for the past twenty years. I know the council gave indication to moving forward with hiring one. I wanted to see what your intention was to actually hire two to bring us back to the current staffing level or to the levels that we've been at for the past twenty years of fourteen career paid firefighters. And I was wondering if you could speak to that point, whether it be now or at some point hiring the second firefighter. Thank you.
Thank you. And uh we'll, we'll be, as, as mentioned, uh, we are getting ready to move forward with the one vacancy and um we'll be looking closely and that uh staffing levels of fire department. And you know, the goal is to keep uh Madison safe and keep us the number one community to live in the, in the state. And uh I think we're all together with that one. Um, and now Christine Boyle.
Hello again. My name is Christine Boyle and I live at nine Buckingham Drive. I'm not sure if I'm supposed to repeat that.
You are. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Sorry if I missed that. Uh, first, I would like to say thank you to Jim Redd for such a clear presentation. Second, I've heard comments about not wanting to pay more taxes, but I sh- but I think it's important that we not be penny wise and pound foolish here. It is clear with rising costs that we need a prudent increase in order to meet our obligations. If we do not generate enough income to meet the recurring expenses, we risk having to borrow. Borrowed money further increases the cost of these purchases for all of us because then we will pay interest on that money. And if we have to borrow at that time, there's, there's, you know, there's, there's no place else to go. We're going to pay those fees. Uh, for, you know, for example, to increase the cost of our river repairs. This will lead to larger future tax increases, and we're going to continue to take care of the maintenance of our town. Further on that point, if we budget poorly, as uh Jim pointed out in his presentation, our credit rating will be lowered from its current top shelf triple A rating. We will further increase the need for larger future increases in our taxes. All of this leads to much higher costs in the future. It's better to deal with it incrementally now to protect ourselves in the future from having to take out expensive debt. No one is saying they like to increase their individual household outlets. What I think is true is that we can appreciate what our purchasing power buys us with our municipal taxes, where among other things, we don't get nickled and dimed on service costs for garbage removal, leaf removal, or sewage. We have beautiful open spaces that will always need maintenance, which costs money. Our roads are maintained, and we have crossing guards to help ensure the safety of our children in this lovely walking town. I could go on and on, but I know everyone wants to go home tonight. Again, thank you all for your time.
Thank you, Christine, and uh thank you for uh mentioning the crossing guards that um Madison employs more more crossing guards than I think every neighboring town combined because of our commitment to helping children get, get to school safely. Uh, George Hay Duke. State name and address and state your, start your comments.
Uh, George Hay Duke, uh, Surry Lane. I, I would just like a more definitive answer with regard to uh hiring the two uh paid career firefighters. Uh, I think before you said that you were moving quickly on it. Can you give us a timeline as to what moving quickly means? Uh, as far as testing, interview, appointment, hiring, and actual appointment? And, and also, I just want to throw in, you, you, you mentioned uh before that something to the effect that Madison is the number one place in New Jersey to live. And I think it came out this week that we were ranked number forty-eight. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. And um the, the timing is um, you know, step one, as you know, is the uh updating the list and then the, the process of uh going through hiring. So it, it's not going to be overnight, but uh you will um, you know, the resolution is on the consent agenda and we anticipate that it's proven the chief will start moving forward. Uh, Tom Harropus.
Hello again, Mayor and Council. Tom Harland Pudas, twenty-seven Palmeroy Road. Uh, thanks for allowing me to speak before, and we got a lot of good answers from the Jim Burnett's presentation and the council people also commented. Um, I wanted to ask you, Mayor, and hopefully you can answer this today. When do you believe we're going to start having in-person meetings again? Uh, this is a very good format for the, considering the situation that we've been in for the last twelve months. But if there's a way for us to go out in public now and the schoolchildren to return to school, there should be a way for you to maneuver to get the residents back in front of all the council safely in your uh council room, or if you need a bigger space, you have other uh public buildings in the borough where you could host a meeting. I, I think that's kind of important. Hopefully you, you guys agree, and I, and I don't know the timeline. I just wanted to ask you about that. Uh, the other thing I wanted to ask about is so you said that the open space, um, open space uh tax uh monies, what the, the budget is just uh comes from the open space committee, and then you vote on certain things that they bring to you. So they did bring to you one uh item which you voted on the last meeting, which was the Masonic Lodge project. And you appropriated, I think, approximately twelve thousand dollars for some kind of architectural plans. And it was discussed briefly what might be the possibilities, but there was no real elaborate uh plan. What would that be useful? We already have a public meeting place that we have at King's Road and New Rose Hall. For now, we still have the community center, which if it, if it does follow, go through with redevelopment for public housing and uh affordable housing, that will go away. But until that happens, there's potential to use a lot of the money from open space for the Masonic Lodge, which in a good times, it wa- it might be very good, a good project to take on since you said it's a historic building, but I'm not really sure now what's the objective. So if somebody could elaborate on that tonight, I'd, I'd appreciate hearing about that, too. Uh, and that's about it. Thanks again, everybody, for your time. I know it's a stressful, stressful period when you're working on the budgets, especially during this COVID situation.
Sorry, having trouble with my mute button. Thank, thank you, Tom. Um, on the meetings, um, yeah, we, we, we will be discussing uh and we're actually appointing our technology committee, and one of the things they, they're going to be asked uh with is the timing of coming back in person. I have to say, I, it's not a virtual background behind me. I am actually sitting in the council chambers, and this has been very lonely. So I'm looking forward to having uh smiling faces out in front uh in the near future. Uh, the Masonic Lodge, um, the, the, the primary discussions and what we're working with partnering, and we anticipate uh applications going to uh State Historic Trust and also the County Historic Trust. It's saving a, a classic building, the oldest church building. It is no longer a church, but the oldest church building in Madison. But that is a number one, but in order to make that happen, it has to be open to the public. And so it would not only, you know, similar to um the, the James Library that uh we were able to, obviously, that was a borough property, but that is a building that's open to the public and so people get to enjoy that great historic building on a regular basis. And so um the uh Mason, all with the Masonic Lodge would be do the same thing in a uh major partnership. And uh we'll bring up Kathy Daly. Kathy, you're, you're there. It looks like you're muted.
Sorry, I thought I had already unmuted. Kathy Daly, West End Avenue. Um, just a couple of points. First of all, I know I have Um, just a couple of points. First of all, I know I had requested that you read um, resolution eighty-nine into the uh, for all of us to hear. And I I admittedly, I stepped away for a minute or two, but I don't think it was read. Um, so don't know exactly what you passed there. But also, another comment I wanted to make was uh, some of the other Madison residents who spoke talked about the hard decisions and the tough choices that you made in the budget this year. And I I've I've listened to many of your budget presentations and I'm really hard pressed to find any difficult decisions that you've made in the budget. I mean, even last year, none of our borough employees have lost their jobs. Uh, nobody was furloughed. Uh, no cuts to personnel, no cuts to hours, uh, very and really not that much cut from the capital budget. Um, you know, the households in in town, people have actually faced furloughs. In my own household, we've had furloughs. Uh, people had their have lost their jobs. People have lost their businesses. And um, and I'm not saying that the borough should cut people or the borough should cut personnel or should cut hours. Um, but we only dipped into our surpluses at the rate of about five or six percent in a historic pandemic year. That means we still have ninety-five percent of this of the money we were saving for a rainy day. And unless somebody shows me otherwise, that is that those are the numbers that I'm working on based on uh, what what I've seen and 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 tracked over the years that I've been paying attention to the budget. So I I really don't see that the borough has tightened its belts in any way. And then to to on top of not having tightened our belts, to be asking people for a tax increase, I I just don't think it's justified. And I haven't seen anything today or over the past three months to convince me otherwise. Um, thank you for your time and I I would appreciate if if anybody would reach out to me and show me that that what I'm saying is not the case. Thank you.
Thank you, Kathy. The 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 actual resolution was not read into record as you might not caught that. The um, because it's it's an actual document, the uh, document that is filed and will be posted, so it was authorized in the filing and posting, so that that will be uh, put out there. Um, there were a couple of comments related to headcounts and I I think the what one of the things that this budget is example of is the the work that is done over a uh, multi-year time so that you don't have to make drastic decisions in a in a um, stressful time. And so the the headcount virtually across the border, the borough is lower than it was a decade ago. Um, and so the goal was to, you know, create a headcount that delivers services and do not go below that. Also heard the comments related to uh, the proper number of firefighters. So this is a constant battle, whether it's uh, fire, police, PPW or any other department. So appreciate your comments on that. Now we'll bring up Pat Rowe.
Hey, I think I'm unmuted now, Mr. Mayor.
You were you were good.
Pat Rowe, twenty-five Pine Avenue, again. Uh, thank you very much. I will look forward to actually looking at the information in the budget in more detail. I did have a few comments, though, based on what I did here tonight. The first is, I actually think you guys should put together a resolution asking our um, our congresswomen, our senators, our governor and other legislatures to really help you out because I don't understand how this American Rescue Plan is helping Madison in two thousand twenty-one. It sounds like all the money is going to be available at best in two thousand twenty-two, twenty-three, twenty-four. Um, we're borrowing one point nine trillion dollars of the country and this is going to do nothing for us this year, according to what I heard tonight. Um, although I did have one thought and I think Jim would have to discuss this with Valerie. Um, if we are allowed to use the money for the capital programs this year, when the money does come in, um, and money being fungible in the way we shift money around between all our accounts, it it almost seems like we could possibly free up some money that we've currently budgeted for the capital budget to use to reduce the current tax rate. And when the money from the federal government does come in and we're allowed to use it for a capital item, plug it back into that. Because as a follow-on to that, some of the things that were mentioned tonight about using the money for some capital programs that are going to have a very long lifespan, like the the sewage improvements, which I did vote for when I was on council. Um, I really think it is the worst use of stimulus money to try to pay down uh, or 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 avoid taking on debt for that. I know we're very adverse to debt, but if you're trying to push money into the economy now, it's just slightly better than putting the money into our bank account and then using the interest every year to help lower the tax rate. Um, I think, again, if if the the guidance from the government is to try to use the money as quickly as possible, using it to avoid long-term debt that we had anticip- anticipated taking on is not a good idea. A couple other notes, um, Councilman Landrigan did mention some of the disasters that happened since two thousand fourteen. I actually believe if you go back and look historically, they actually happened before two thousand fourteen. And if you go back and look historically, the surpluses that we had at those times was significantly um, lower than it is today. And we were able to weather those storms. Um, and in terms of transparency, you know, I've asked for the last two years for all the surplus accounts, the capital accounts, the the general accounts and our reserve accounts to be, you know, forthcoming to during the budget process. So we as a community can truly evaluate how much money the borough does have on hand. Um, Jim even referenced some of that tonight in terms of the the accounts being drawn down, but I still have not seen some of those numbers presented to the general public. Uh, so I'd hope that we'd be able to get those as we go forward before we see the final um, budget for approval. The final thing I'm going to note or two things I'm going to note is, you know, we talked about how much or how little taxes have gone up since two thousand fourteen. But the one thing that we keep forgetting to tell people is that because we forego forgave a massive electricity cut that we could have seen since two thousand fourteen, when the cost of electricity to Madison uh, started going down and has gone down significantly over the last six-plus years now. So one of the things I did ask for when I was in council is not just showing what we pay in terms of property taxes relative to other towns, but what we spend relative to other towns and see how we really stack up then, because we've been using a lot of the money from the electric utility to sort of paper over the increases in our budget. Um, and finally, in terms of timing, I understand what the state guidelines are, but I know that every year I see plenty of towns that do not pass their budgets until the summertime. And I understand that it's not ideal. I understand that they might ding you one point on one of your your scorecards. But again, I still think that having more information and having a better understanding how the money that's coming from the federal government can be spent outweighs any downside to um, to deferring voting on a final budget until we have better information. And as Jim said, I'm not quite sure that's going to happen before the end of April. So I would still recommend that we strongly consider pushing that final um, final approval back. Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor.
Yep, thank you. And Maria Slaybo.
Uh, Maria Slaybo, twenty-eight Stafford Drive. Apologies for making a long meeting a little bit longer. But I just wanted to comment that um, I failed to see how anyone could reasonably see this budget presentation and hear the various questions from council members and the detailed answers and see the challenges faced in putting forth a sensible budget in these uncertain times and not feel good about the recommendations being made in this budget with its modest increase. As a Republican, I know even said, this is a well-run town and I couldn't agree more. So thank you.
Thank you. And seeing no other hands raised, I hereby close this part of the meeting and we go on. There are no ordinances for introduction, so will the clerk please read the uh, council, the consent agenda resul- uh, statement? Right, tongue is not working anymore.
Intended agenda resolutions will be enacted with a single motion. Any resolution requiring expenditure is supported by a certification of availability of funds. Any resolution requiring discussion will be removed from the consent agenda. All resolutions will be reflected in full in the minutes. Mayor, I move resolution ninety dash twenty-two-one to resolution one oh one dash twenty-two-one.
Second.
Any discussion or any of that need to be pulled? Roll call vote, please.
Ms. Bailey?
Um, I will vote um, for resolutions ninety through uh, one hundred and abstain from one oh one.
Okay, Ms. Byrne?
Yes.
Mr. Hoover?
Yes.
Ms. Cohen? Ms. Ehrlich?
Yes.
Mr. Landrigan?
Yes.
In case the public didn't catch that, uh, Ms. Cohen was having trouble with the microphone, but she nodded. Yes, so it's unanimous.
You got it.
There is no unfinished business, approval of vouchers. Will the clerk please read the voucher papers? And we lost the
Oh, you're muted. Oh, I'm sorry. Here we go again. Um, for the current fund, three million nine hundred and forty-three thousand one dollar and seventy-one cents. For the general capital fund, sixteen thousand seven hundred and ninety-three dollars, three cents. For the electric operating fund, fifty-two thousand one hundred and sixty-seven dollars and ten cents. The wa- water operating fund, four thousand two hundred and twenty-seven dollars and forty-four cents. For the water capital fund, ten thousand two hundred dollars. And for the trust, three hundred and fifty-three dollars, fifty cents. The total is four million twenty-six thousand seven hundred and forty-two dollars and seventy-eight cents.
Mayor, I move approval of the vouchers.
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Ms. Bailey?
Yes.
Ms. Byrne?
Yes.
Mr. Hoover?
Yes.
Ms. Cohen?
Yes.
Ms. Ehrlich?
Yes.
Mr. Landrigan?
Yes.
And a new business, I'd like to uh, take the following appointments and requesting counsel confirmation. This is for our technology task force. These are all term through December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-one. Uh, Mayor Robert Conley, Councilwoman Deborah Cohen, Borough Administrator Ray Cody, CFO and Assistant Borough Administrator Jim Burnett, IT Director Jim Sanderson, Resident Claudine Bertie, Resident Eric Range and um, Communication and IT Coordinator Michael Pallacier.
Mayor, I move uh, approval of uh, the uh, technology task force.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. And uh, Bob, it's great to have you back, so you can
May I? Do the duties. We endure.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you all and thank you for the uh, public that uh, joined us tonight to share your comments. Oh, be well.